This conference will now be recorded.
That clock's fast, time being 4:45. I'd like to call the meeting of May 4th, 2023 to order. Let's say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
...... of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just for all.
We can review and approve the minutes of 4:20.
Yeah, it should be, if there were people there, it would be, they'd be... Just check. There we go. Yep. Nathan.
Okay, got it. All right. Everybody read the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 4:20, 2023.
I'll second for discussion, but I do have... Trying to find it. So, under page, it starts on the bottom of page two of four, and the top of page three of four, under Catherine Dawson, Selectman Dawson. There was a number of different questions that Catherine asked, and there were a number of different answers that Catherine received, but it's not in totality here in the minutes.
Thanks for bringing that up. I also have it noted. Can I also add to that the same section? It says, second sentence, "It was confirmed, Jeannie, is the point of contact for the department heads." That wasn't, unless it's an emergency, I don't believe that was part of the discussion. I specifically asked about liaisons.
Correct.
And it was determined, there's no liaisons. And then we had a conversation about the chair. In case of an emergency, that's the contact.
But the PD.
Well, even Public Works, if they have an emergency, they're going to call one person instead of four or five. In other words, you know, we just had this flooding. Let's say we had a brook that was flooded over. He shouldn't have to call each one of the selectmen and said, "Oh, by the way, we have an emergency."
Right.
So usually, the emergency contact is the chair. And then the chair calls everybody else, the town administrator, the rest of the selectmen, whoever needs to be called, whether it's PD or... But that was the conversation. So, yeah, thank you for bringing it up.
I think we need to talk a little bit more about that, though, because we established as about liaisons, and we didn't have a liaison. I wasn't the liaison, and then Jeannie was the liaison, and wasn't the liaison any longer. And then we established that they would, if there was an emergency or a fatality or untimely death or whatever, that the chief would call the chair. We didn't talk about the Public Works, but you have a good point in that if, but during the week, if there's an emergency, I would assume that he would, my opinion, though, but I would, we can talk about it later. I would assume that that would be the town administrator to call, because the town hall would be open. You mean when town halls not open?
When we created the liaison positions 20 some odd years ago, that was the purpose, just to have that contact.
Got it.
That's the conversation we had for these minutes. And it's just an FYI. It's not that Public Works needs permission from the selectmen or any of us to take care of it. It's just FYI, by the way.
Doing a point one person instead of the five.
Right, and that was typically the chair.
Okay.
Also, going back to the minutes, on page two, we came out of non-public, and the minutes were sealed because disclosure would adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the board. And I believe I asked permanently, because there's two ways to seal minutes, until the matter's resolved or permanently. And I believe the answer was, we're going to seal these permanently.
Permanently.
So I believe that should be indicated there. That way, you know, somebody wants to see those minutes, it's going to say, "Oh."
Okay. Jeannie, you had your hand raised.
So my question is, I'm sorry, I don't have my book in front of me. Somebody took it out of my car. Did they change it that so we could seal minutes?
Yes.
Until the matter was resolved? And then you would seal minutes permanently? In other words, we're not going to go back and open them up after the matter's resolved? Did they change that?
It says, "Board may be withheld until an opinion of the majority of the board. The aforementioned circumstances no longer apply. Thus, a vote to seal the minutes is merely a vote that the minutes will not be made available upon request until the board decides otherwise. The minutes are not physically sealed. However, sealing the minutes is a useful shorthand way, blah, blah, blah." And then...
The Attorney General hasn't updated their rendition of 91A. I mean, I called him up on the phone because I felt it was long overdue, but...
Where does this come from, Jeannie? What you're reading?
This comes from NHMA, was the updated right to know.
Well, there's some other things on there that we're changing. Want to table those, table this until?
Well, the fact is that our discussion last week, when I asked that, it was, said yes, permanently. So maybe just add that discussion to it, and then... I can, I'll be glad to call the Attorney General's office and get clarification on that.
Can we get copies of that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, what do you want to do, Board?
Let's see, are there other things that have to be looked into to change it? Or do we have specific changes?
No, she just wants to, she wants to add what was actually said last week. I shouldn't say she. Catherine wants to add exactly what was said last week.
Yes.
Which was, seal it permanently. She asked the question, and we answered yes. And the board agreed.
And you want to add the other wording?
No, we don't have to add any other wording, other than permanently.
The other changes.
Oh, the other changes are, well, Jeannie's going to look into the other changes from under Selectman Dawson. Catherine asked the board, there's some questions here, you can read them, but there's no answers there to those questions.
We can add those in.
Right.
Do you want to table it until they're done? Or you want to?
Up to the board, I'm not, yeah, if that's what you want to do, want to table them?
I have one more.
Uh huh, okay.
On page four.
Yep.
One, two, three, fourth paragraph up. It's about the training. It was a consensus to have all staff in Town Hall attend the training, excluding the selectmen. We had a conversation about that, and it said, you know, why the selectmen wouldn't be there. I mean, it's redundant that it was canceled, but nevertheless, I think there should be an explanation as to why the selectmen were excluded, rather than having this statement.
We did talk about it, why it wasn't. So can we elaborate on that a little bit? I see Catherine's point there, because when we just say excluding the selectmen, it just, there's no reason behind excluding the selectmen. If we think about reading this two years from now, nobody's going to know why we excluded the selectmen.
And wonder why, we're just hanging there.
Like we had a disease or something.
So I'm going to make a motion that we table them, and for changes, and Joe will be here, hopefully. That's my motion to table.
You want to draw the...
And have the draft available?
We have a motion in a second to accept the minutes. Do you want to just withdraw the motion and it's?
I think a table can be... Oh, withdraw the motion.
Okay.
Well, you're required to, what is it?
Oh, withdraw the second.
We should have drafts available, because it'll be what, two weeks before we get back to them?
Yeah.
Drafts that are...
Well, she'll send out a draft.
To be corrected if somebody asks for them?
A draft ahead of time.
We should ask that.
Yeah, she does that. That's what I said, she does that. Okay.
I'm sorry, so there's a motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
A motion to table the minutes to next week. A motion and a second is on the table, any discussion? All those in favor of tabling the minutes to next week?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome, Joe.
Thank you.
All right. Our next appointment is not here yet.
You've got to accept the minute, or the...
The donation.
To do that, if you want.
Yep, so, I'll make a motion to accept a $1,000 donation from Nathan Langione for the Tilton Island Bridge Restoration Project.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and to accept the $1,000 donation from Nathan Langione. Thank you, Nate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept a $500 donation from Timothy Sattler for the Tilton Island Bridge Restoration Project.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Tim. Accept a $500 donation from Belknap Subaru for the Tilton Senior Center bus.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded, all those, any discussion? This is for the bus from, for Northfield and Sammerton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Belknap Subaru. Motion to accept a $60 donation from Elton and Alyssa Fortenberry for Tilton Senior Center.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded, discussion. This is also, they were married by Kim, so any donations, Kim doesn't accept payment, she just says a donation to the senior center.
Outstanding.
So thank you, Elton and Alyssa Fortenberry for the, from the Tilton Senior Center. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, how are you? Good. Are we going to have Cindy join us up at the table or at the podium? How do you wish to have that?
There's going to be two of them.
Yep.
So might as well drag up some chairs here.
Do you want me to grab the other one? I'll get it, I'll get it.
Terry, can you? She is. She's held up, she's right behind you. Oh, no. In the meantime, I can hand out, I have handouts? They come without handouts.
And you already have this, right, Jean?
I do.
Okay, so I'll start this way.
Thank you.
One, it's one page, front and back. And how about we go this way with these?
So this is just one page, and then we just...
Yeah, so it's front and back.
Got it?
But it just gives a preliminary outline of what is in the works for a commuter. But I can go ahead and start, I mean, this really is Terry's baby, this expansion route. But, and I know she's right behind me, but if you want, I can start.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Concord Area Transit has the funding in place to start a commuter route, which will go from Concord, connecting to Concord Area Transit, up through Laconia. And it's going to go along Route 3. So it's going to go right through Tilton, along Route 3. And it's, we haven't named it yet, but it is an intercity commuter route so far. It's what we have it named. The route is planned to run Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 6:30 PM. And it does have a one-hour headway. One hour before they would be back again, to pick up again. And like I said, it is fully funded. It's using 50, FTA Section 5311 funds, and required a 50% match, which Terry was able to secure the final portion of it using some ARPA funds. Just waiting to see if she's... So the idea is that it's going to, the route will start in Pennacook. It is going to go to Exit 17, the new market basket over there, Merchant's Way. Because I know that's a big shopping location for a lot of folks. Then the idea is it will go from there up, and it will stop again. There is a route, there is a stop that we've added in between here in Bosquin, on King Street. And then it's going to go up to the Merrimack County Complex. So it'll, it'll stop at, you know, the nursing home there, and the Merrimack County Department of Corrections. Then it's going to travel on up to Franklin. It's going to have a stop at the Franklin Industrial Park. So we can hopefully get some employees up to Watts Water, and there's a couple other companies up there in that area. And then there's going to be a stop somewhere in Franklin, Memorial Canal Street, somewhere right in there. There is a potential for another stop, not quite sure where that would be. But then it is definitely going to go into Tilton. It's going to definitely stop at the Walmart Market Basket, somewhere right in there. We're thinking that we would also want to stop where the Concord Coach stops in Tilton, or J.Jill. Because you know, that's a big employer here in Tilton. And then along to the Bellknap Marketplace, and finally, ending in Laconia. Laconia Hospital, there's potential for another stop somewhere in Laconia as well. Laconia Town folks, the city, thought that there would be another stop somewhere like right downtown. We're thinking that the Veterans Cemetery along Route 3 would have, and/or Webster Place and Franklin, potentially those could be on-call stops. So if someone were there, that means that when they got on the bus, they would say, "I want to get off at the Veterans Cemetery," and we'd let them off. Or if they are already there and want to get picked up, they would call into the office and ask to be picked up there. We do that now on our, the routes in the city of Concord. There's a couple of places where it's an on-call stop. We are looking for, so we're looking for, we just want to, number one, we wanted to educate all of the towns that this is going to impact, to let you know that we are planning this. We are hoping for support on this. Of course, this year, we have a whole year where we're completely fully funded. Going forward, there may be an opportunity where we could partner up if we find that it's successful. So I think this is really wonderful that we have this opportunity to have this fully funded for a year. We could see what kind of ridership we're going to get, right? And it was kind of the same idea with the Tilton Senior Center, right? So, and in addition to this, we are also going to be looking for support from some businesses, you know, maybe, you know, the Market Baskets and, or Market Basket, Concord Hospital, there may be some other places we are, we could potentially look for some funding opportunities there as well. So we are looking to get, you know, support from everywhere, and particularly those businesses that we really do hit a lot, you know, that, like the Market Baskets, the Concord Hospitals, we're bringing a lot of folks to them, a lot of business to them. But even, I know that we've gotten some support from, say, Watts Water, because we're bringing employees to them. So first, we'll stop there, and we'll kind of, I'll open it up to any questions about the expansion route? Okay. Whoever would like to go.
I, how often would it come by? Let's say the staff was Town Hall.
Yeah.
How often does it come through?
It would, so if I understand, and Terry, like I said, Terry's the expert on this, because she's the Transportation Director. But from what I understand, it's going to be one hour from the time that a person is dropped off or picked up, by the time it would come back around again. So that's what it means by that one-hour headway. So it'll be an hour, so going up and around, coming back. Terry has timed this out, so she could actually tell you some of the times that it would take between the stops, at least the preliminary stops that she's done. I did not go on that trip to...
Did she time it during summer traffic?
I did notice, it's really busy out there.
Oh.
It's just busy, yeah.
And it changes seasonally. Yeah, it changes seasonally.
Probably her coming in, too. I heard the door.
We'll have 50,000 people go through town in the summer, more in Bike Week.
Oh, sure, right, yes.
Lots of those big, big, big days, because...
Hello, hello. I apologize. Trying to get out of Concord on Thursday night at 5 o'clock is not the easiest thing to do.
Yeah. So I did get an opportunity to kind of run through the idea.
Great.
And we are opening up to questions. And one question was that the headway is how frequently would they be each, would the bus come back by? And I told them that this is really your baby. You've gone on these, that you've done the stops, you've timed them out. And so maybe you could talk about that, like he was suggesting, that if the stop was right here at Town Hall, when would it be back again here at Town Hall to pick up again? And it's...
Right. So this is almost sort of halfway on the route. So basically, the time that it takes to drive from here to Laconia, make stops in Laconia, turn around and drive back. So it's going to be...
Forty minutes.
Forty minutes, probably, I guess.
An hour in the summer.
Yep. Exactly. Or on a Thursday night or a Friday day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yep. So it's basically the distance that it takes, the time that it takes to drive it, plus we figure usually five to 10 minutes per stop, depending on how many people are getting on and off, and whether or not we have somebody that is using a wheelchair, so...
What's the cost of it?
Right now, it's fare-free. So we've gotten several, well, two grants so far that have allowed us... We had initially through the CARES grant when we were in COVID, that we used to go fare-free at that point. And then I got a couple additional grants after that to keep it going. So that's my plan.
There are a couple questions. So that's the round trip amount. How often, if you're going north, like to Laconia, how often would the pickups be, like at Town Hall, let's say, was it Town Hall?
So kind of, again, the length of time that it takes to drive from Concord up through Route 3, through into Franklin, to here and back down again, so...
Is more than one bus, or?
No, one bus.
Oh, okay, so the bus would have to go all the way back, and then, so it's probably more than hours, isn't it?
For, well, so to get back, if you were here and to get back to here, it's going to be about 40 minutes. To go from Concord to Laconia and back, that round trip is just under two hours.
So if you missed the bus, it would be two hours before the next one?
Correct. Yeah, it's truly set up as a commuter run. So it's to get, kind of, get people to work, and then be able to pick them up at the end of the day and bring them back. And then if we can make it work for stuff in between there...
Have to work it out.
Right.
So now, it sounds like if you miss the bus, you miss the bus.
Yep.
It's like at school, Catherine.
Yeah. Yeah.
I liked it in school. I missed the bus.
Yeah, it's a public transit bus. It's not a demand-response service, so it's a actual going from stop to stop, and you wouldn't deviate from those stops in between.
So if I needed to go to someplace in Franklin and someplace in Laconia, it wouldn't work for me?
It could, if you have a way to be able, and one of the pieces that works really nicely for both Franklin and Laconia is we have a demand-response bus service on either end. So if you're a person over the age of 60, or you have a disability, and you're trying to get to someplace that's not a stop on this commuter run, we can arrange to meet you at the stop for the commuter run and take you to where you want to go with the, with a demand-response bus that we have in each area. Yep.
So the other question, presently, the Concord Trailways bus there, our Concord Coach, is going to be moved, the location of it.
Oh, I had heard that.
They're redoing the gas station, and they were not interested, last thing I heard.
Someplace easier to get in and out of, I hope?
Don't know yet. Yeah, that still is being negotiated.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, perhaps...
That's really interesting, because we were actually trying to figure out what that stop was going to look like in that area. Because we have had a couple of requests around J.Jill to get people back and forth to that work location, and then also, obviously, the mall. And the nice thing about that is there's a light on either one of those, either the intersection right in front of the, is it Walgreens that's on the corner there?
Correct.
If that light there, or the light coming out of the mall, would be what we would be able to use to get back out into traffic efficiently. So we were trying to figure out how to work the Concord Coach bus stop into that. So with a new location, it might, might be all up in the air, yeah.
So we're not sure when that will happen, if they'll move where to, or be on that same road or section through there, and maybe a different building in there or something, but...
Yeah, obviously, someplace closer to the highway, I would imagine, so they could have access on and off, yeah.
They have the same thing, they have to turn around and that, too, so...
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, they're going to be looking for something.
How many passenger?
So the plan outlined 1,000 passengers per month for, to, or 1,000 trips per month.
How many passenger bus?
Oh, in the bus itself, you mean? So I'm starting out with a small bus, because I honestly don't know what the, what the full ridership is going to be. So the, we'll have a 16-passenger bus on initially, just to see what the ridership is going to look like. And if need be, we have a 28-passenger that we can put into service if it booms, like we're hoping that it does, and we have a lot of people on board at a time, so... Yep, we have, I, maybe Cindy already told you, we have a lot of interest from the industrial park in Franklin. Watts has reached out to us, and they have several people that they've interviewed, they want to hire and can't get there, that live in Concord or Manchester. So this would be a great way to get a group of people there. that live in Concord or Manchester. So this would be a great way to get a group of people there all at the same time. Those pan out. So. Yep. So we'll have one bus, two drivers. So it'll run from 6:30-ish in the morning till 6:30-ish at night. And be able to connect to the Concord bus down in Pennacook to make the full connection for folks to be able to get all the way into town. So.
Yeah, I'm really excited. It's going to connect Laconia through Concord to Manchester because the Manchester Transit has that pickup there into Nashua if you want to. I mean, and then all points south.
Yep. And we have the direct access to the Concord Coach terminal in Concord. So they have all the, all the access to those buses as well. So. Pretty cool stuff. A little daunting. If you know any drivers, head them my way because I got to hire a couple of new drivers on top of the three that I need for my regular routes. So.
Do you pay more than for a student?
We are, so right now, we probably don't, but I'm looking to, hopefully, if we get the match that we are requesting put back into the state budget for operating, we, that would allow me to do an increase for pay for my drivers that will keep the ones that I have and maybe draw some more to me. So.
The same all over.
Yeah, I know. I'm hoping to go up to like $20 an hour, hopefully. So. Yeah, scary. And then we just have to wait for the automated buses to come in and then we'll have other things that we have to worry about.
Or the electric ones?
No, the ones that drive themselves. That's the, that's the newest thing right now and they're pushing it pretty hard. So. Yeah. I'm, I'm, hopefully, I'm going to be retired on a beach somewhere when that happens. So.
They've got kinks to work out, but eventually.
Hey, who knew that we were going to be doing the stuff we're doing now, right? Yeah.
I grew up on black and white TV.
Who controls the kids on the, on the automated bus?
Yeah, there you go.
It's going to be a scream.
So that kind of brings us to the next portion of this is the, we're, we're going to each town too. We figured that since we're already here, now would be a good time to talk about the statewide Public Transportation Coalition that has been formed. There are multiple towns. So you could probably speak to this better as well, since I don't, regarding the, the funding and all the, this stuff. So the Public Transportation Directors have been looking at their budgets and there's like a fiscal cliff that they're going to fall off, that they've been running with, probably COVID funding that.
Care funds, yeah.
Yeah, that are now going to end. And so DOT has put in an additional, they've increased the request to the state.
For state operating match. Yeah. So we've had a, a amount in the state budget of $200,000 for the last two years for state operating match that allows all of the transit services to use that to draw down the federal funds that were allocated so that we can fund the services. And that $200,000 puts us 43rd.
Forty ninth.
Forty ninth in terms of per capita funding for public transportation in the country. It's, it's truly kind of a drop in the bucket in terms of what's needed to be able to draw those federal funds down. So that's forced all of the transit providers here in New Hampshire to go back to towns and go to counties and go, go with our hands out to say over and over again, we need more money to be able to match these federal dollars that we want to draw down to run the service. So we've done some advocacy with state representatives and with the decision makers in Concord to try to get that match increased using some of the funds that are available, the surplus funds that we keep hearing about that are available to be able to allow us to draw those federal funds down so we can do our work. So as we were just talking about, I, I can't keep drivers at 20, even, you know, what I'm paying right now. I, the market out there is just not tenable for me to be able to keep drivers. And the only way I can do that is to get more match and the match for operating, which is what that is, is 50%. So I have to have a match someplace to be able to draw those federal funds down. That's half of what I need. So it's, it's a big, it's a big ask. And we've had good success. We've had some strong support at the state level. The last we know, that the, it came through the House with that increased ask in place. And it's now in the Senate to, under negotiation. So we're basically trying to keep the word going and the momentum going. And if you know of a representative that would be open to our message and would be willing to talk to him, that would be fabulous. Because we really need those to be able to keep this expansion run going, keep just the regular services that we have for everybody going. So.
And it takes some of the burden off the town as well.
Yep.
So this, this page on, in the, the Public Transportation in New Hampshire handout really does kind of go through the funding in New Hampshire. And you can see where we're way down here at the very bottom. Well, not the very bottom. We're Wyoming. They're, they're below us. But they're the only ones that are per capita funding is, is less than ours. So, yeah, fingers crossed. I know that several towns and cities have.
Written letters or done resolutions to support the, the ask for the operating funds that we've requested. So.
Yep. So if, you know, the town of Tilton were open to that as well, it would be very much appreciated if it's something that.
We got a letter of support from Franklin, Laconia, Concord, and we didn't get one from Boston.
And I know other towns as well. There's throughout the state.
Throughout the state, yeah, the state, we've had a really good response. Hanover, Lebanon.
Dover.
Dover, Portsmouth. Manchester, Nashua.
Other one that's mentioned this morning.
No, it was over in the Keene area.
Okay.
I don't remember. So if you guys have any interest in helping that, we can definitely get the contact information over to you for the representatives that we've already contacted or anybody that you know that's a, a good buddy of yours or you're at least on talking terms too, that would be great. So.
I would like to talk to somebody about that funding because it's going to cost your asking for money. And okay, I think, as you know, I'm a transit system guy, but I have to have something quantitative. Ridership numbers and this is, this is something, how does Tilton, Tilton, not individual, individuals within Tilton, but Tilton as a whole benefit from this?
And that's the cool thing about the county stepping up and doing this, basically seed money for us. Because with the grant that they gave us, that 114,000 that they gave us, that's going to allow us to run this for a year so that we can get those numbers and see what it looks like in terms of who's riding and where are they going and what, what the draw is and what the need is. So that we have those, that data so that we can actually use that for the, you know.
How are you going to get the word out to people that these things exist?
Yep. So as soon as we have the finalized route structure in place, we're going to start working on the literature, the brochures, the, the name. We haven't even finally settled on a name yet. So we're kind, kind of thinking something along the lines of Midstate Connector or I don't know, something that has.
Something catchy.
Something, you know, yeah. And then we'll get all the information together and we'll start blasting it out there. So I had a decent article that was written after we presented to the City of Franklin. There was a reporter there from the.
Laconia.
Laconia, not the Laconia Sun, it's the Laconia Paper. Anyway, he did a really nice article that we got a bunch of calls from, like, when's the bus starting? And I was like, well, yeah, we're just talking about it at this point.
And it was picked up by the Concord Monitor.
It was picked up by the Concord Monitor. Yeah. So Cindy will, that, that will be Cindy's territory. She's going to be in charge of getting the word out, making sure we got the publicity out, do some talk shows, do some TV spots, I'm going to assume, on the closed caption TVs, I mean, community TVs. And then.
You might get in touch with like the Better Business Bureau or businesses. Because if the businesses know, they can make that information available to the employee.
Exactly. And.
That's right.
The Chamber of Commerce is on our list. So we wanted to get to all the municipalities first and then we're going to hit the Chamber of Commerce and do, do the rounds, you know, get out there and, and talk it up and get the information out there and.
That's right.
Yep. So.
So that's the idea.
Got a lot of work ahead of us.
Yes. But what a nice place to spend the summer, right? Up and down this route.
That's right. Yep.
When do you need the letter of support?
As soon as you can would be great. It's currently in discussions at, at the Senate at this point. So the more we can get to them in terms of continued support, the better it plays as they are in those discussions. So I can get a copy of the letters that we got from Franklin and Laconia, if that would be helpful. So you have a template to take a look at.
I know a person that, that specializes in that kind of stuff.
That's right.
I was thinking you were probably looking over my shoulder.
What is the total projected cost of this service?
So the, I don't honestly have the actual total of the cost. It was 238, I want to say. And we, of that, most of it is operating. So we have the, the total match was 119,000 and we got 5,000 from the City of Concord, added into our annual budget ask for them right off. So we got the original, the, the additional 114 from the Merrimack County Opera Grants to be able to get the match in place.
So how much are you looking for? Or are you just help us out here somehow?
So this year, I'm good. This year, I'm, for, we, the funding is good from the Merrimack County through fiscal year 24, which is June 30th, 2024. So what we'll be probably doing is coming around and saying, this is what we need in addition for fiscal year 25. So probably your next buzz, next budget cycle, we will be approaching you and saying, here we are. It was successful. Here are the numbers. What do, what do you think we can put out there? So I'm, in the meantime, that's, we're hitting the ground running and we're already making letters and getting asks out for Market Basket. I mean, we serve five Market Baskets at this point. We provide service to five of the Market Baskets in the region. It's like, time for you guys to start helping out. So we're crafting letters for Market Basket, Watts, all the businesses to be able to see if they are willing to help out. We're going to, I, you know, we're kicking around a lot of ideas, you know. Rent a seat. So, you know, you pay however, whatever the money amount is per month. And we put a plaque on the seat that says, the seat provided by Watts, this seat provided by whatever. So that there's some advertising on the bus that's going to be available. And people know that the ride that they're getting is being provided by their local community, you know. So we're kicking out all those kinds of ideas to see what we can get in place to be able to get those funds in place before fiscal year 25. So.
Okay. I'm sure the board will be discussing it at some point.
Yeah, that's why we wanted to get out there early so we could start the, start the ball rolling and get stuff going. So.
And of course, if any other questions come up.
Yeah. Do we have cards? We have a card here somewhere.
I do too. And it is our contact information.
Oh, is it? Okay.
It is.
Yes. All right. Cool.
I think we know how to get in touch.
I think you do. I was going to say Pat has my cell phone number and my house number, I think. So.
Do you have a couple more of these that I brought? Didn't know if anyone else you think would need one. Okay. Just one to offer.
You got to reach out to Julia on this one? Do you want to broach Julia on it?
Yeah. Okay. Cool. And I wrote, were there any of these left? There might have been. I brought these. Well, you have the, the, the one page, the front and back. Okay.
Cool. Well, thank you very much, you guys.
Thank you. Yes.
Much appreciated.
There was an accident on Loudoun Road and East Side Drive. And if there's an accident there, it stops everything. And I'm like, oh. I thought, I go all the way down to Walmart, maybe I can go that way and I might as well just wait until it clears. So, sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Good to see you.
Nice to see you. Bye-bye.
Thanks, Julie. Bye, guys.
Bye-bye.
An extra one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye, Cindy. All right. Next on our list is municipal parking. We have an update on Tuscan Hill Properties. Jeanie? Kevin will not be joining us tonight. He has an emergency to go to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I've been talking back and forth with Carmine and Annette Serno to see if we could come to some.
Need to talk into your mic, Jeanie, please.
Been talking with Carmine and Annette Serno to see if we could come to some resolution on the parking issue. You know, you've had an agreement with them for those spaces for quite a few years. Well, ever since I've been here and prior to me. And ultimately, we were not able to resolve the concerns that he had. So I did receive an email from Annette. And the area at the rear of 285, 289 Main Street, which is the space that faces the fire department. So you know where we have that wall installed. He is going to take all that back and it extends beyond, you'll see the yellow outline. If you look past the yellow outline towards the fire station, you'll see the white. That's actually his property line. And he intends to put a fence up. There. If you look on the other side of Central Street, you see the fire station, which is number 43. Number 42 is the town of Tilton. We own that or you own that. 41 and 41A is what the town has been leasing from the Sernos. They intend to take that back. They will be fencing it off from the town-owned adjacent parking lot by the middle of May. So that effectively, you would not, what people do now is they drive, you know, from one parking lot through the other parking lot toward in the back. So you won't be able to do that because they're going to be putting up a fence. Lots 41 and 41A will be fenced off and not accessible to the general public after the Memorial Day weekend in May. And signs will go up through the month of May for preferred parking leased on a monthly basis. Kevin was going to be here tonight to present to you his parking plan, which you're losing with this. Approximately, I think, 37 spaces. And Kevin had a plan that could probably get you up to 30 parking spaces. But that, he, he did talk with the board about that the last time around. And there was not, appeared not to be a lot of interest in the proposal that he had put forward. But I think he's got a few other ideas.
I have a question looking at this. Would we consider talking to?
Would we consider talking to Panulo on Lot thirty-six? I believe the plans have been for that to be a parking lot all along.
Is that the fenced-in area?
Yes.
And so probably every year since I've been here, I've reached out to him. And unless something has changed in the last.
Well, he's not gonna sell it to us because he needs it for parking for tenants in his building, but we might be able to partner with him.
Well, that was the.
How did that work out for us the last time we partnered with him? Where did the fill, where did the fill for that part? It used to be a hole. And Bob Cormier put together something because it got filled in.
Well, we didn't partner with him.
Wow.
Because I didn't agree to that one. The town decided to fill it in.
It wasn't a town resource necessarily, but the deal that went down was that if it got filled in so that, you know, it could be used as a parking lot, then, uh, we could talk about, you know, maybe getting some parking municipally.
We've never talked to him that way.
We, it was.
The Board of Selectment didn't, not in my time anyway.
The intent of it was that if it got filled in, perhaps that would be encouraging for him to have his tenants use that space, which would open up spaces in the municipal for other people to do, to, uh, use.
Right, and he went through the process, I believe, of planning.
Right, he did.
And if I remember, there were things that they required him to do.
Correct.
Sprinkling the, the building.
No, 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 it had nothing to do with the building. It had to do it, they wanted drainage planters.
Yeah, planters.
Planters and the, the, the planning board wanted them to do very certain things for him to do it, and he did not want to go through that major expense for him to do that in order to create a parking. It would take away particularly those, I believe that there were cement planters to create a border and.
I don't remember that.
That seems a little excessive.
Uh huh, the, in, it was a major expense to him to do it and he didn't want to go into that, invest that much money to that because he still had the, the, uh, what do you call it, on the side of the building where you climb up, scaffolding, scaffolding. And so he still had to deal with all of that on the side of the building and that's, that whole period of time. Go ahead, John.
So, we talk about what happened in the past and how things didn't work in the past, but this is now. Times changed and I think we have to re-approach it in a different way, or, you know, explain to them that we're, when the town's in a little spot here for the we're keeping our, um, downtown active and going and, and, uh, providing parking for all these different residents. So I, I'm looking at this map and if I look at thirty-six, Center Street, it, it doesn't line up with where the fence is. Why is that?
The yellow lines are not where they're supposed to be.
I think it's just the overlay.
Yeah, they're.
So his lot actually goes all the way out?
But yeah, it does. Thirty-six goes right to the Center Street. Yep.
So those aren't the actual deeded lots?
Thirty-six is the deeded lot, but you just push, the overlay, push it over about an inch on this map here. See where the dirt is?
You can't trust those yellow lines to be boundaries.
Oh, right, okay. Yeah, don't, don't trust the yellow line. See where the dirt ends there, where the map is? That's the boundary. So you could, at the time, if my memory serves me, which sometimes it fails, um, there were thirty-some odd spaces that he could actually get out of that.
So where's the fence going? I'm not certain. You said it's gonna go around just forty-one, but Center Street will still be open.
The Center Street has to be open. It's our road.
Right.
So it's, he's just boxing in that area.
He's just boxing in, correct, where, where you see forty-one begin, so there's.
Forty-one A.
There's nine spaces, there's eighteen spaces there.
Yeah, so it starts there.
So that starts there, right.
Okay.
And he would fence, he can't fence, fence in the road. That's our road.
He'll have to apply for ingress, egress. He's gonna fence it off.
I'm not sure, number one, I'm not sure the availability of fencing it off. I think that that was my question that I had because if he fences it off, where does he put the snow storage?
He'll have to haul it off site.
Or inside there. He can pile it up in the corner of it.
Probably got, if you consider the number of tenants he has.
Six.
He has enough room in there to.
Three apartments, so six feet.
Yeah, so he could take up three spaces for snow and it wouldn't be that big a thing, probably.
But he needs to be aware of that because he's actually wanting, if this is what I heard from Jeanie just now, he's actually wanting to lease on a monthly basis any one of these spaces to anybody. So if he fills this lot, lot up by monthly leases to anybody, there's not going to be any s- snow storage, so.
Problem.
Well, I'm.
Has to be snow storage.
Some point in time, what I'm saying is.
You're not applying for the planning board to go and have to put the fence up, right? So he doesn't have, it's not change of use or anything, so does he have to?
He doesn't have to, that's, he doesn't have to apply to the planning board.
How does?
So how?
How does he get educated on what, on, on the, on? Where does he do the snow? If he, if he fills up all of these?
But isn't that his issue?
Right.
It's not, I mean, we, we have no jurisdiction on that. If you, if, just like your own driveway, wherever you put your snow, you put your snow and it's too much.
We could be nice and let him know.
I mean, you go through the expense of putting this big, big fence up around your property and then uh, all of a sudden, the town comes down and says, okay, you can't do this because of this. Do you think you, we should educate him first before he does that because we leased the property there first from him and, and now he wants to take it back, and I understand why he wants to take it back.
Well, what jurisdiction do we have to say that you can't go and put pile of snow in your own driveway or your own yard?
No, I think what Pat is getting at is that he's gonna have to store the snow on his property, not on town property. It also can't melt and create ice on town property, on our parking lot or on our road. So he's gonna have to do something about drainage because all that snow, he's gonna store this, gonna melt, or he's gonna have to haul it off site.
So he just needs to be cognizant of these things when he's doing that. As a good neighbor, we need to let him know that so that we don't look like the bad neighbor when we have to go out there and say, can't do it.
It appears to me that there's some ongoing issues that are causing him to want to do that. And that possibly there's some type of resolution to those issues um, that would benefit everybody. Um, I'm not certain why that's a lot of expense for him.
So there, the.
Do we go into non-public?
I don't, I don't know for what reason, there's no reputational issue, so. So he went to the planning board because he wanted to create three or four new apartments on the second floor. Currently, he has retail on the first floor and on the second floor it's office space. He was advised by the fire department that if he is going to put in, it's a change of use from uh, office to apartments, residential, he will have to sprinkle the entire building up, upstairs and downstairs, and you probably know that the building is not, he does not own the whole building. He owns about three quarters of the building and the last quarter is owned by somebody else, but he's being required to sprinkle that as well. So, um, quite an expense for him and, uh, he is looking at parking as a way to try to help him pay for, um, what he's trying to do.
So.
I don't know how, I, to your point, John, I don't know how to resolve it because I've been working with the state. I've, I've looked into different funding sources with all the money that's coming into the state and the housing. Um, I've talked to the Commissioner of uh, Bureau of Economic Affairs in West New Hampshire, uh, the Historical Society because it's a historical building and what accommodations could be made. I've, I've spoken a couple times to the chief, um, the fire chief and it's unless, unless we can find funding to help him pay for that, the sprinkle, that's the way he's gonna find the funding.
The, the concern is life safety.
Yes.
So, in my previous employment, we, I did hundreds and hundreds of fire inspections, fire alarm systems and that, and sprinkler systems and testing the, uh, sensors and all them. And I've seen a lot of properties and a lot of them had, provide they had complete fire alarm systems, they were allowed to not have sprinklers. And I don't know if it was the system, but a lot of people have that, that's.
They're not, the, the fire department's not allowing that. It has to be.
Because he's going to. He's gonna do some major renovation.
He's, he's putting three apartments in, but technically, um, life safety, uh, the fire alarm systems are safer than fire alarm, than a sprinkler system. The reason being is that a sprinkler system only goes off once you have an active fire and heat, or a fire alarm system will let people know as soon as you have smoke and get the people out of the building prior to actual being flames and going on. And with that, a lot of people have gotten waivers saying if they have a complete fire alarm system, um, very comprehensive one, that they don't have to have the sprinklers and they have gotten waivers for that. So whether, I don't know if it's our particular fire department or what, but I, I think if they talk to, um, perhaps a commercial reputable fire alarm company, that they might be able to go and assist and, uh, with that, because they've done it before.
So I talked to the, um, fire, uh, chief to ask if there was any other way that this could be addressed. He went to the state fire marshal and he came back and said, no, and had, the whole building has to be sprinkled. That's it, nothing else. And that's coming from the fire chief and the state fire marshal, so. I hear what you're saying, but they're the ultimate authority.
I have seen it done.
No, and I don't doubt that you have.
And it's usually negotiated with a fire alarm company, explaining to them what they're gonna have and how it will be monitored.
Right.
And, and doing that, and it's, that's a free thing.
And, and I, and I can tell you that in other communities that I've worked in with other fire departments with historical buildings and especially, you know, where we're at when wanting to have additional housing, that you know, it's been something that you could work through, but in this situation.
And that's what I heard from, on the other piece of property, thirty-six A, from the owner, I had spoken to him once.
Right, same thing.
Exact same thing.
Same thing.
Um, that was a third floor apartment that are up there.
It doesn't, it, it doesn't seem right though, if the other towns and cities in, in the state of New Hampshire are doing it one way in.
Usually what happens is, because I, on the housing standard inspections I've been on with, with Tim Jewett, if you have a building there's no sprinkler system in it and it's all apartments and they have, they have to have fire detectors, bump detectors. They're not required to put in a sprinkler system unless there is a change, and a lot of the building codes are like that. Unless there is a substantial change.
In the building.
For the building. So if he left the building alone as it is, he's not gonna have to sprinkle, uh, to sprinkle it. But because he's making substantial change, he's gonna have sprinkle. Like this building, unless we do substantial change, a lot of things we don't have to comply with. ADA is one of them.
What is the cost difference in a, an, uh, like an alarm system to a sprinkler system?
Probably talk for, for that's that whole section, is, is it just thirty-four you're talking about?
Is it thirty-three and thirty-four, or is it thirty-four that they're just talking to sprinkle?
They're, um, so the entire building.
Thirty-four? Thirty-three and thirty-four because they're both on, no, just thirty-four? Because it's just on, he only owns that part. The other one used to be Mike's.
I didn't do pricing. I would suspect probably about twenty-five thousand dollars.
For a sprinkler system?
No, for fire and a sprinkler would probably be like a hundred and twenty-five.
Oh, so that's bigger difference.
There's plumbing and whatnot.
Isn't there a monthly fee?
In the water, yeah.
Whether they're used or not.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, and presently, um, they have to have a separate water service for the sprinklers, so they'd have to connect in from the water department.
Dig in through Center Street or wherever it is.
The water main is.
But the alarm system would be monitored, there'd be a, a charge for monthly fee for that too, right?
Twenty-five, thirty bucks a month or something.
Wow.
But I, I mean, built comprehensive commercial fire alarm system is.
Wow, that, that substantial change in price.
And that's too bad. That holds up the whole project.
That would.
But it's the knowledge of running infrastructure.
Right.
Oh, what's terrible is if you go down Main Street, there's buildings all around him, or there's apartments.
Mm-hmm.
And commercial, just because he chose to have offices up there, and they're not sprinkled, and they're not required to be unless there's a substantial change.
Wow.
Sometimes it'd be nice if the laws make sense.
Okay, let's get back on track here.
Yeah, not really, I wish.
Nope. Um.
I suggest we reach out to Panulo, see what possibilities are.
Do, who to reach out, Boyd?
Well, I don't mind reaching out. I've talked to him before. Be nice to reach out to him without having to tell him he's gonna repair his furnace or.
But he brings you cannolis.
I hasn't had that in years.
Okay. I was gonna say, you need to bring me one.
Thank God.
What, Boyd, what do you think? Catherine, reach out? Okay.
Give it another shot. What the heck? Nothing ventured, nothing gained. We have to do something.
Meanwhile, in a couple of weeks, if it's okay, we'll have Kevin come back in and look what, uh, he'll be back in under the rental thing anyway, but, um, go over what his ideas are on the parking.
Sounds good.
Sound like a plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it would be nice to have a map that actually shows the boundaries of, I mean, I love these overlays, but it's I'm looking at this, I'm wondering if some of these properties have encroached onto our Center Street.
Alright.
I mean, it doesn't, it, yeah.
The only thing, way we know that is by, uh, having it surveyed.
Home serve, there's no negotiating with them, some too? On Lot thirty?
Have we talked to them at all, Jeanie?
Three or four times.
Pro fruitful?
Do they own other property here or is it just set up?
The only one I'm aware of.
You own number thirty one, don't they? The bank building.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, the bank building and parking lot.
Is this open to a public comment?
Sure, go ahead, Nate.
So as far as
You have to state your name and address, though, first, okay for the record?
Sorry, Nathan Langione, eight Winter Street. So as far as the parking at forty one A and forty one, I believe they would need to get a permit to install the fence. And I believe that would go through land use, potentially code. So at that point, they could be informed about the snow removal and drainage concerns. And there, I'm not sure if they could potentially be required to get a survey done to make sure that they are, you know, installing the fence on on their boundary lines. And then as far as home serve at thirty and thirty one, I believe they also own new car or it's, you know, both organization.
No.
No. An old org. They used to own auto serve, but it's a separate organization altogether.
Okay.
It's a separate business, Nate.
Understood. I thought it rolled up to the the same people, but thank you for the question.
No, no. Prior owners. But thank you for that information, though. It's a good point.
Would they need a building permit to put up a fence?
Could be a setback or?
Yeah, it has to be. You have to tell them.
I don't really know.
They're gonna have to have.
Good point.
They're gonna have to have the property.
Maybe they do.
They're gonna have to have the property checked in case of gas lines. I mean, they've got it.
Oh, they'll have to do that, but I didn't know if they need a building permit to put up a fence.
Yep.
I had to get a permit for a six foot fence.
Yep, you do have to get a permit. I know that because I asked for my property then decided against it.
Be interesting to see what Kevin suggests. Looking at this, it looks like we could put more spaces in that lot to the east of the fire building if we are a little more creative.
Finagle, yeah, I mean, there's.
It'll be very interesting to see what you suggest.
Right.
And it looks like we could get a couple more next to a couple, maybe a couple more next to Community Action.
Well, then then you have the also.
Oh, there's. Yeah, there's.
Because that draws some people from here, you know, mantra and the town of Tilton, the referred to as T hop lot.
Correct. Yeah, there's there's more space down there to define some spots.
Yep. Well, that's for another day because Kevin will map that out for us. Right? Real set.
Who you'll talk to? Mr. Plunlaw?
So the plan is you're gonna.
Just a casual side here. Well, if we we have angled parking on the what north side of Route three. What if you put angled parking on the south side? Going in the opposite direction.
I don't think it gives enough space.
We can't do both sides of the road because it's not there. We tried measuring that when we did the angle parking because there's not enough space for dual travel for doing it. One had to be straight, parallel parking, one had to be angled parking. Are you talking down here?
I'm talking right in front of Billy Lawrence's.
Yeah, we couldn't because there's not you can't. There's not enough space for the road travel with angled. It's you're gonna stick out.
You cannot change the angled and parallel parking along Main Street
Yep.
without losing spaces.
Yep. And it would stick out too much. They already the state came and measured. There's not enough travelway if you do that.
It's already pushing it now when you get a truck.
When you get a truck, right, absolutely. Okay. The time being six o'clock. I make a motion to move into nonpublic session per RSA ninety one A colon three two C matters which discussed in public would like adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of this board. Unless such person requests an open meeting, this exemption shall extend to include any applicant for assistance or tax abatement or waiver of fee, fine or levy if based on inability to pay or poverty of the applicant.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Jessamine, aye.
Ruggles, yes. Scanlon, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Constantino, yes. This conference will now be recorded. I make a motion to seal the minutes of the May fourth, twenty twenty three, because the disclosure would adversely affect the reputation of a person other than the member of the board.
Jessamine, second.
permanently?
Permanently.
Jessamine, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen's reports. Joe, you're up first.
I have nothing.
Nothing. Okay. Catherine, you're next.
Excuse me. All right, Economic Development Committee. Is that an advisory? Or did the selectmen subjugate some authority to it? I couldn't find any.
My understanding is it advisory.
Okay. And how often do they report after every meeting? Do they report quarterly to the selectmen?
That I don't know.
I've only attended one meeting myself, Catherine, so I can't say.
I don't think we've gotten a formal report from economic development. We've had two people from the economic development that's reported individually at selectmen's meetings, Scott and Eric. Am I right?
I had looked for the minutes, but the they didn't get posted until February ninth for August, September, October and November. Okay, building permanent, yeah, permanence, building permits. They don't seem to be available on the website. It used to be if you put in a search on the front page of the website for, let's say Dawson, you would find many building permits. Of course, all the tax cards, but anything that had to do with Dawson. I've done it several times recently in the past, I don't know, year or so and no longer. And building permits used to be a great place to find, you know, phone numbers of property owners, et cetera, et cetera. So I was just curious as why those are no longer available as public documents on the website at any rate.
I can't answer that. I don't know if anybody else can. I looked the other day for building permits and I couldn't find them.
No, the applications too.
Are we still using that program?
No. No. It was supposed to do another program as an alternate. I don't know where we are with that. The one, can you answer that?
Tim's working on that.
Okay, I I know that they were supposed to do another one as an alternate to that. Excuse me.
Oh, can we find out why we're not? Those aren't available on the website anymore?
Building permits.
Well, any of those.
Are the reference and building permits and references to.
So it was that you just find building for anything.
Documents regarding planning board applications and all that.
You find anything. If I put in the name, like I'm gonna say Dawson, I'd find building permits that have been applied to for all kinds of stuff like that. Dog, no, not dog license. I forgot the other stuff. But now the only thing that's there is anything that has to do with taxes or text cards.
Well, I'm looking at something that says application for lot merger, application for driveway trench.
Under Dawson?
Under Dawson, under the town website, which most people would go for.
But do you finding ones that somebody filled out with their information on it?
So you can't find a building permit for. So let's say I did a building permit.
I see what you're saying.
A garage. You can't find it on the website. I came into Leanne yesterday to find a particular one that I got a call on. I I couldn't find it on the website at all.
I think the last one's back in the last year, twenty twenty two was the last file on there.
Be nice some something nice to have back on there.
Do we have a ten year plan from Public Works for road bridges and sidewalks?
I believe he does.
Last roads one, we think. I I thought it went out to like twenty twenty seven. That's that's but yes, he he had given us a.
He's got a plan for sidewalks and when he's gonna do them.
I think it's a five year plan.
Yeah.
We always had a ten year plan. I'm sorry. I didn't know.
It was a ten?
Yeah.
Is it available on the website?
I don't.
I don't think it is.
Don't know.
Could we get a copy of that? Please. And then my last question, I'm sorry, I'm so full of questions. This is almost a brand new experience. The sidewalk on the south side of Main Street, do we have any plans to pave that?
This year, I believe, right? Yep.
Next year?
This year.
Oh, good.
This summer.
Because we did this side.
Yes.
It seems like we're doing a lot for the north side and the other side is atrocious.
This this year, it's he's going to redo it.
Okay.
This side.
That's good. And then my last question is, so I had looked over the document that was sent out for the municipal agreement for the welfare director and Laconia. And then I looked at the one that was downsized. And my question is, why aren't we doing this in house anymore? I mean, I did I for the health officer for years was the backup. Even the town clerk's office would do backup.
The selectmen's office was the.
Right. So if we're not doing it in the selectmen's office, why aren't we doing it? The health officer or the town clerk's office?
Who can solicit and see who can?
Because I mean, when we try to partner with other communities, there can be conflicts. An example is the housing going on in the motels. We still have families. I mean, other communities send their people to Tilton and then we have to cover them. I mean, you know, that years ago, I don't know. I guess I won't say this. Forget the next thing I was gonna say in public. But that's a conflict.
Right.
If we do it in house, like I said, I'm I'm glad to do it again. But I'm sure the town clerk's office would do it again or in a combination. It's much easier and less liability and less headache if we just do it in house.
I think we need to have the rest of this conversation with Heather in the room. Because it was based on Heather's recommendation that we went with what we weren't with.
Well, I think we should have a conversation with Heather.
Well, there you go.
I'm fine with it. I I it's gonna save us money if we go in house.
It's gonna save us liability. It's gonna save.
Well, it's also you're more familiar with in house as well. You're more familiar with the people and.
Well, Helen, I I started covering for her because she covered for me. We work very closely together. I mean,
Right.
There's very few, but then I'm not referring to her and she doesn't refer to me. So maybe Heather can come in for our next meeting.
He's coming in our next meeting anyway. Yeah.
Perfect.
Yep. So we can bring that up.
Perfect.
Okay. We'll just add a couple of minutes on for that discussion.
And I'm all set. Thank you.
Yeah. That's it. John, you're up.
Not too much. I waiting for the rain to end. I I've started picking up trash around town, just trying to knock down the walk up through there. Chili's is officially gone out of there. And I have some concerns that the DOT, I haven't heard anything. Nobody's heard anything from the DOT regarding the whole road and it's eroding out a lot more.
Although. Right up here?
Yeah, because what's happening is is all the road, there's no drains. So the whole road comes down and there's one spot where it started breaking through. And now that's all washing out a whole section of the road there on the other side, the riverside. And that's right on the curve. I don't know what's going on with it, but.
Have we heard anything more, Jeannie, at all? Nothing? Can we try to reach out to them and see where that's at?
Well, I think the last presentation they made to the board laid out the timeframe of what they were working on and it wasn't soon.
Okay, I get. Yeah, you're right. Forgot that part.
But I know they were working on some plans or something with it and permits. I don't know. We could find out where it is, where it's at. That's it.
Just quick with the obviously same thing I said last year with the added daylight, people are out. Even though the weather hasn't been great, enjoying things more. We just need to keep our eyes out for children on the, you know, crossing the street, et cetera. So just it's 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 more active out there now. And I've noticed riding around too. So just everyone sort of keep your eyes out for pedestrians, et cetera, later in the evening. That's.
That's it?
Yep.
Good. Now I get to take the bulk of it. I met with Paul Rushlow in some of the selecting John and Catherine met also at the same time with us. He did declare those trees diseased, dead and a hazard. I then met with oh, at the same time, there were it was brought to our attention that there was a neighbor's tree as well that was at the time, the same same thing happening. It was dead near the road. I then met with Kevin as well, and he said they were a hazard to the road roadway and that he could possibly take them down. There are four trees actually, but one he cannot take down safely because it does involve drops going to to and from the building. So that would have to be a bucket or or have someone take it down, one or the other. But the other three you could take down safely. So it's just a matter of giving permission to the from the board. Go ahead.
How many of those trees do we own? Are we responsible for?
You don't own. That's kind of a difficult question because I read the RSA and we're declaring them diseased hazard to the road. They're falling in the road. The branches are falling in the road. They're leaning towards the road and they're dead. And they're dead. And there are two of the three that are diseased with ashbore, which is a budding buffalo park as well. So I read the RSA. Did I not last meeting, which says what we could? It weaken, um, the governing bodies of cities, towns and county commissions are unorganized places on class four, five, six. Highways in town maintain portions of class two highways may declare any tree alive or dead situated within the limits of the highway, roads or streets to be a public nuisance by reason of danger to the traveling public, spread of tree disease or reliability of equipment installed or upon utility facilities authorized under RSA 23160.
And these trees sit on, sit on a class two road?
Yeah. Well, what's Daniel Drive? Class two, right? Class three?
It's, um, I don't know what that is.
Class three, I think.
It's class three. And then you have the RSA 23150, governing bodies of cities and towns, county commissioners for unorganized places shall annually and at other times when advisable, cause to be cut and disposed off within the limits of town maintained highways. All trees and bushes that may cause damage or pose a safety hazard to such highways or to the traveling public. Provided however, no tree which has a circumference of 15 inches or more at a point four feet from the ground shall be removed in the absence of notice to the butter in the same manner as provided in RSA 231145.
That does, that, yeah, I guess that would include somebody else's property.
Yeah. If it's fallen in the roadway.
Can't we send them a notice? Take care of your trees? Not our tree.
There's more language and we should have a road book somewhere. And I don't mean, what is that called?
Yeah, I can't believe that your road book is somewhere and you don't know right where.
Oh, I have, I have a copy. I bought one years ago. Mine might be out of, they needs to be updated, but the town had one too. I forget what it was called, but it was a book about, you know, highways and all that stuff. And it talked about trees.
Yeah.
I mean, we're actually supposed to be going around and having a policy of looking at trees like that that are on our town roads. It could be a hazard to drivers. And maybe Kevin does, I don't know. But, um, yeah, that's certainly if those.
He said he could safely do it.
I guess the biggest thing here is we've been made aware of the liability.
Yes.
Is it our liability though? On somebody else's property?
If we're made aware of it and it's in a public way and people walk that road and cars travel that road, then we're aware of the liability.
You could see, I didn't see branches in the road, but I can see the leftover from a branch falling and then there were branches over there.
I took on several days.
They had fallen.
Living close by there.
In the road, not close to the road, in the road.
I've taken them out of the road.
Yeah. So the root, the trunk of the tree may not be on town property, but the tree canopy is over, overhanging the road.
Yes.
And one of them, if it goes and Paul said they were dead.
Yeah, they're dead.
They're dead.
They drove by there and they're.
Paul Rush, they're dead.
Oh, they're.
It could go in the road.
Yep.
They could fall.
Yep.
It's too bad. They're nice trees.
All right. Consensus, everybody. Yes. John?
Cause that's, oh, the birch tree is one, those birch trees are one, ones that there's in the wire.
Yes.
Correct. Do we know that those are dead?
No, yeah. Paul said, yes.
Leave nothing green on that.
Nothing. According to Paul.
Well, when, when out there, there was no leaves on any trees.
So it was mostly dead.
Paul said it was dead.
Paul said it was dead.
I agree.
I will admit not to walking up there.
Arbor's.
Okay.
Well, it's, the situation is, how are we going to remove? Remove three, not one? Or are we just removing?
Kevin will figure the rest of the.
And what will that cost?
Yeah, he's gonna have to find out.
He's gonna find out on the fourth one, right? Catherine?
Yeah.
Yep. John?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
But we're just gonna take them down. We're not gonna dig out the roots. That's up to the property owner, right?
Yeah, right. As long as they're not a safety to us.
We're just cutting her down.
Just cutting her down.
We should make sure that the property owners know that's.
Oh, yeah.
Right. That's it. We're not, we're not beautifying their lawns. We're just getting rid of the hazard.
That's good.
We're leaving the stumps.
We're leaving them stumps.
Okay. I want to read this if I can get through it for, um, just for the minutes, if I could. This is the 12th anniversary of the Tilton Senior Center. And this was written by no other than Jane Alden. Happy 12th anniversary to the Tilton Senior Center. If you happen to drive down Grange Road in Tilton, you cannot miss this small, unassuming building that looks like something from the days gone by. At one time it was a mission church, then Grange Hall and the home to the Tilton Historical Society. Renovations had been started by the society, but halfway through they ran out of, ran out and it was, funds ran out and it was turned over to the town. There it sat for several years, decaying in the elements. Enter selectman Pat Constantino, who for years had held the dream providing a home away from home for the senior citizens of Tilton and the surrounding communities. She now had an opportunity to make this dream come true. She shared this dream with her fellow selectmen and they agreed that such a plan would be ideal for the old building if funds could be secured to make necessary repairs. A small group of individuals in the community agreed to help in making this dream a reality. The first step was taken when several individuals presented the plan at the annual town meeting. The town agreed to provide seed money of 20,000 to start the project, provided the group could produce all other funds to make this plan a reality. We were on our way. Many long hours and tireless work went into what we enjoy as the Tilton Senior Center today. It once more is filled with joy and laughter. Drop in anytime for a healthy lunch, an exercise class, a cribbage game, or any number of activities. And of course, every Wednesday night, you can enjoy the acoustic country pick and party. We are so fortunate to live in a community which has continued to support us. The business community has and continues to partner with us by providing financial assistance, products and labor. We partner with Community Action Program and are fortunate to have Cindy Clarenbatch as a program director. And none of this would be possible without great volunteers who ensure that the doors are open and that the daily operations can continue. So you see, dreams do come true. What does that future hold? The possibilities are endless. And this was submitted by Jane Alden and it's on our May newsletter. So happy anniversary to the Tilton Senior Center. And it is National Police Week. Each year during the week of May 15th, National Police Week recognizes law enforcement officers' contributions throughout the nation. Our officers put on their uniforms every day, not knowing what the day holds. They have answered a call to public service that is demanding and often unappreciated. I encourage you to take a moment and thank law enforcement officers for all they do for our community. We have a letter, is this non-public, the letter from Pines Community? About Pines Community? We have a letter that I forwarded it to everybody. Did everyone read it?
Two weeks ago.
Do we want to do anything about this letter? Want to read it again?
Um, is that sign you should?
You want me to read it?
I'm just curious if the sign says who it's from. You don't have to say who it is, but does say that.
Yeah.
It does. Yes. It does. Enter telephone number.
That's one person's opinion. I don't think that we should have a discussion about the pines without the pine sitting right there to answer our questions and rebut some of the allegations. I, I read it.
Okay.
I read it. And I have, not recently, but have sat on the Pines Board.
Okay.
And I think that having the director here to answer these questions in official capacity might refute some of the allegations, might open up other questions.
I agree with you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think it, I think it could also, and Catherine knows from Budget Committee, I think it can also open up the larger discussion too, as we've talked about, um, you know, exactly how much should we as a municipality be contributing to them if we've got a much smaller percentage of our citizens using the services over there than you know, the, the neighboring community. So, you know, I think maybe at some point in time, we look at a, a larger sort of discussion with the pines and having them be here and, and talk about that. So.
They have figures about.
Oh, we have.
Oh, sure.
We, yeah.
Yeah. You have to sign in with your town when you go in there.
Yeah, we have, we, we got the figures. We have the numbers from Budget Committee. I think we also have them too. So they're there.
That was expressed to them at budget time?
When we, when we talked to them, we, yeah, we, we openly told them sort of, you know, yes, we're gonna say yes to the funding for this year, but going forward, we really need to look basically doing the dollar cost analysis of, of, you know, if we've only got, I think the number was, if we've got, if, if we are only in a sense, using 29% of, you know, the services, because only 29% of the participants are from Tilton. How do we then take a look at numbers wise, what would be an appropriate amount for us as a municipality to contribute? You know, to the, to the thing. And, and they're cert, you know, obviously their programming is great, et cetera, but we also need to think, you know, overall, exactly how much are we using? Because if we're going 50/50 right now, it's not a 50/50 in terms of the services that we use over there as a, as a municipality.
That's what we're buying is service.
Correct. Absolutely.
Yeah. Possibly it would be a good idea to have a half year checkup. Because we go at the end of the year and we do the budget and they say, well, next year we're gonna do this.
Yeah.
So if we do half year, express our concerns and ask them, you know, so if we schedule it in the beginning of June, that'd be good. And give them time to think about it.
That Virginia June meeting is gonna be a crowded one.
What else?
Yeah, because we have evaluations. So maybe July.
One of the meetings.
A lot of times at evaluations, we've even done workshops for.
Yep. Yeah, we have.
Needed.
Right.
So people can't see me shaking my head. I just want the public to know that I do, I agree with Scott completely. He's absolutely right. And we, we don't contribute money or support them. We buy services from them. So he's absolutely right. I agree. Oh, heartily.
Okay. So consensus is that we should have them in June-ish around there.
Mid-year.
Mid-year. We'll save, we'll save this letter and we'll bring it up and.
And I would also have Samantha here as well. She's Director of Program Services.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Now let me just look over what else. One other thing, and this is probably just for FYI, I don't have any concept whatsoever. I noticed this past week when we've had a deluge, deluge of rain, that I've gone by Riverfront Park and the sprinklers have been on every morning. Is there a way that they can schedule it or turn it off when there's?
No, I asked him about that. He says it doesn't, it isn't hurting the lawns. I mean, because of the amount of water we're getting.
But we're paying for water though.
No, the water comes out of the river.
Okay, got it.
We're not paying for water. So it would probably cost us more to have him come out, reprogram it.
Got it.
And then come back out when it's done raining and reprogram it again.
All right. It just seemed.
Which is, everybody knows, the water comes out of the river.
Got it.
We don't pay for water.
I forgot about that. Thank you. Cause I, I was, he was kind of chuckling, going to work at 5:00 AM and, and.
Pouring rain.
Pouring rain and they're just shooting.
I know. I was down there Saturday morning. I had to do some repair and block and et cetera. And I was like, oh, there's an oxymoron for you.
Right, exactly. Exactly.
Connect our some pumps up to our sprinklers.
All right. That's it for me. I believe that's it for me. I just had one I brought to Jeannie and Kevin's gonna do the fence around Penulo's thing. It's our fence.
It's already done.
It's already done. I haven't checked. So Town Administratives Reports. Moving right along.
First action item is, I sent to you an electronic version. There's also a hard copy in your packet. Erica Mayer provided language for processing of complaints. It was based on the meeting that the board had with him and Mike Ricker directing him to create some language for disciplinary process. He suggests that it be an addendum to the personnel policies and employee manual. And you have that, I don't know if that's something you want to act on tonight, or if you want to take time to read it and discuss it at your next meeting.
I need more time. I've read it a couple of times, but there are other things I wanted to compare it to.
Yeah, I haven't had the opportunity.
I've read it. I.
I've read it. I have no major changes.
I have one and that would be number nine, but adamant about number nine, but other than that, let's put this on the agenda for next.
Okay.
Everybody gonna be, read it for two weeks from now?
Okay.
Everybody, is that okay? Two weeks. I'm gonna hold you to it.
Next item, the next item is the Morrison Avenue Survey Plan. You got an electronic version. Hard copy should be in your packet.
Yep.
The results of the survey showed that a portion of the traveled way on the west end of the road falls beyond the limits of the right of way. According to minutes.
Oh, Morrison Avenue. Yeah.
The town has been using, has been traveling on that portion of property for 20 years. According to our attorney, it is ours by adverse possession or by prescription, however you want to refer to it. So I did talk with Kevin to find out his thoughts on it. He'd like to keep, continue the road as it is, rather than following the boundary lines and making a hard right to go out. So it's really just bringing this to your attention and to see if you had any questions or any thoughts.
Have a question. Does the property owner at that address know of this?
You are the first to know of this. So I.
Not anymore.
Well, you are the first. So I have not communicated that to him, to them. I don't believe that the surveyor did.
It's not the surveyor's job anyways.
Does that mean we have to make different calculations on the value of the property?
You don't have to, according to the attorney. It's, it's ours by prescription. Because we've been using it, or I should say the town's been using it for 20 years.
That's how Tryon Lane and was it Rescue Way? That's how they became town roads by prescription. They don't allow you to do that anymore. Take a road back prescription.
Isn't that what we're attempting to do?
No, that's what we've been doing.
It's established.
Already did it. We're gonna codify it.
So essentially the road isn't the right place, except. Essentially, the road isn't the right place except for our, oh wow. The areas of contention, it's in the right place. Previous, that was the thing is that. President's concerned about the width of the road and want to make sure we put it in the right place.
This shows.
What looks right.
What should be. It doesn't show existing.
It has existing boundary marker for the property.
Well, it doesn't, it certainly doesn't show where our road is on the west end. That's that.
The road is on top of that property.
That's right. So it doesn't show it. That's what I'm saying. That black, that center line is, center line of traveled way. So my question is, this shows a 40 foot wide right of way. Is that asphalt? I don't think that asphalt's 40 feet wide, is it?
Is that from corner to corner or just the easiest way to get around?
Different ways.
If it was my property, I might.
I'm thinking of one house in particular.
Yeah, it's not.
It's.
So are those abutting properties within our right of way?
The one on the corner, you mean?
No, I'm talking about some of the others. There's one house up there that is so close to the road. I think they could open the window and reach out and touch.
Right behind John's house.
No, there's even one further up.
The same way?
Yeah.
I know when years passed, there were problems. I mean, years ago, 15 years ago, there were problems with runoff from that road running into one particular house.
Yeah.
I mean, just because the way of the road.
Yeah, but isn't that the corner that we, our road goes over somebody else's property?
Actually, there's two houses that do that on, there's one on the corner.
Yeah.
And then there's one about halfway up, the same one that was. Question that was.
The parking issue?
Yeah. That they had the drainage issue too, and they built a wall up. I think a lot of that Kevin's going to address because he's creating the road, putting in drainage.
So that leads me to my next question.
Well, there's different widths of the road now in what is the surveyor saying? It's all supposed to be 40 feet?
According to this.
Oh, it's a 40 foot right of way.
40 foot right of way, according to the road book of the D?
According to this.
Oh.
I've looked at these subdivisions before.
That means. John doesn't have a garden.
Good. Glad I didn't read it.
And you don't have, I mean.
That doesn't come up with Mike.
On that south side, there's so many places that there's no place for a ditch.
Nope.
I'm curious how he's gonna put in drainage.
Well.
It seems like you tilt the road.
It should.
This way a little bit.
Towards the north.
Drive it down.
And drains on that side, but.
That would be.
The pavement is about that thick now.
It only has to be, you know.
That's gonna be a problem for the right, that is gonna be a huge problem for down here. It's already a huge problem there now.
Well, you would have to do something about a storm drain.
You're just have to take all the asphalt up and completely regrade that road. Otherwise, they're gonna have a foot or 10 inches.
Right now, it's.
To get up onto the road.
In most places in thicker enough. And that's, but once he takes.
Solid road.
Once he takes, yeah. Once he takes that out, he can pitch it different.
I'm glad we have a talented public works director.
Yeah. And if he pitches it all towards the north side, picks up some drains, because right now the whole road is all going down to the.
The bottom.
That, that corner there. And that's why the guy had to put a berm up, but the whole thing. And then put a drain up further. He'll catch it.
I thought Dennis Allen built that berm.
Kevin's got a plan.
We need coordination with the water folks too, which is already, we've already talked about. As fun as it is.
Okay.
So this doesn't, are they still gonna keep it at 40 and just go that? Those little circles are the. Ends, I'm assuming, and that's where they got the 40 feet. Where the right of way is. Know where the road is officially.
All right. Moving on. Next, Jeannie.
Tilton Northfield. The Access Property Damage Indemnification and Liability Waiver Agreement. You, I provided you a hard copy in your packet along with the electronic version. You have the one that we sent to Tilton Northfield and their response back to the town on the agreement. And I have not done anything with this yet until the board looked at it. Tim and I and Kevin looked at it. But it hasn't gone anywhere else. So didn't know how you wanted to proceed, if you wanted this to go back to our attorney to see if the changes that they are requesting are acceptable, or if you want to accept them.
Did I read in here, I know I read in here somewhere that they claimed partial ownership of the wall?
Yes. They, they do. I, I think there's like 15 feet at one end that's on their property.
Probably the, I was gonna get, I was gonna guess the eastern end.
It's, it's towards Prospect. That.
So it's the western end. It's the western end.
Western.
So by their entrance?
Yes, it's by their entrance.
Yeah. It's like 15 feet, I think.
Their entrance or is that our right of way?
That's it.
That's where I was.
That's our right of way. That's our.
I mean, our.
But the wall, but the wall is on their property. That it is our right of way, the entrance, but it's, the wall is on their property.
That little section?
Put some parking spaces right there.
Is there any plan for Kevin to disturb it, that section?
He needs access to be able to make the repairs. And that's where we've kind of, where.
Oh yeah, here it is. It's partially owned by the Water District.
I believe we had taught, I mean, that was part of one of the points that we made, that we're going to be replacing their, a section of their wall at no cost to them. I think that was one of our, I know, I, I remember bringing it up to them when we met with them.
I still think we should.
That isn't, this doesn't say that.
Yeah, no, I know.
This doesn't say that. It says we will return their property to the condition it was before we got there.
So that's, that's.
Frankly, just leave the wall. You don't have to worry about it.
Perfect.
That's why I asked if Kevin had any intention of doing anything with that section of the wall.
No, I don't think he did. And I think that the, they intended to have somebody else do their piece of the wall.
Good enough. There we go. I've read it three times.
We should keep going back and forth, back and forth. It won't get done until 2026.
Yeah.
No.
And then it's going to be a huge liability and then we'll end up suing them because they were the ones that, that hold us back.
Unless you close the road. Unless you close the road.
I, maybe that, that's what they want. And then how are they gonna get to their, their building? If we close the road?
I'm playing catch up. Who originally wrote this document?
The original document started with the Tilton Northfield Aqueduct Company. They sent it to us. There was a lot of what. I think the selectmen felt were issues. We sent it to our attorney. Our attorney corrected it to make sure that we were protected. It, it's gone back and forth a few times. And then this last time, you met with them. They agreed, I thought, to the changes. We made the changes, sent them back. And I don't think we're agreeing with the changes.
So who made all the red?
So which one do you have?
Both.
I know, but I don't know which one you're looking at.
The one dated March 16th, 2020.
So theirs is the one, and I, theirs is the one, oh, March 16th, 2023? That's theirs. Theirs is the one that they, they inserted the word mailing. Then they crossed out the word mailing and put in the word physical. And in our original, it was correct.
It was mailing and physical in the original one.
Right. It was correct. And I called them and I said, what you sent me doesn't make sense because it was correct in our first pass. And if you look on, there's on page, the third page, all the way down, they put indemnified parties, the word, we had the word are, they crossed it out and wrote arc. So I called them and said, I, I don't think you sent us the right document. And they insisted that they had, so.
So did they make the changes in red in this document?
Those are their, their proposed changes, which, yeah.
So overall, I think Catherine, they. And the rest of the board will correct me if I'm wrong. Our, our impression is mine and Tim and Kevin's is that they want to make the town responsible for.
Everything.
Everything. And if anything happens to their pipes, we're responsible.
Up to a year.
I think they said three years. Remember, it was three years at the beginning.
It was three years, right?
Yeah. It was three years at the beginning.
You're absolutely right.
It was three years at first and then we.
And we don't even know the age of their pipes.
Yeah, that was when, when we met with them and we asked Kevin, would you feel, you know, what, what would you feel comfortable with in terms of the timeframe on that? And he said, one year. And that's why we had it switched to one year.
Do you know how old those existing pipes are?
Yeah.
But we'll just go round and round again. I would, I would suggest just go, do you want time to look it over, Catherine? Or do you want us to just go back to the attorney and say, this is what they sent us back?
Or the alternative is just to say, what we sent you is what we sent you and we're not changing.
It's, and it's.
We're fixing our wall.
Well, and it, I, I found it interesting because you pointed out, Jeannie, is that they put in red what we had already done. Like, like, there's, I mean, I went through it about three times and went back through the original one that we had. And, and there's, yeah, and there's, 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 there's only a couple of subtle, like. But on, on our original here on the hard copy, the things we wanted were in purple. And then it's the exact same stuff that they put in red. I don't, I was, I was a tad baffled by it.
So you could spend more money, send it back to our attorney. You could go back to them and say, our, this is what we're, what we're comfortable with, what we sent you originally, or you just do nothing.
We have to fix this wall, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I believe so.
It's gonna, I think it's only gonna get worse under that road.
It would be move you to go over there and stand over there and see the sinkhole that's there. You cannot possibly open that end up right now. It has to be fixed.
And it's not gonna get any better. And I, I would.
From last year to this year, it's worse.
I don't even want to know what it's done over the last week.
Sills and stuff coming out of the wall.
I've got the radar thing, picture, and there's big voids underneath there. Random voids.
And like you said, when you know about a liability.
This is a town road.
Yep. But we're so being held hostage to a document.
What I'm uncomfortable in this document is at the bottom of page two. In the event the town fails to reimburse the Water District, the town and Water District agree that such unpaid expenses shall be subject to other remedies pursuant to section 25. Or no, it's two, is it 2.5? 2.5.1 of the Water District's tariff and shall be considered charges subject to tax collection under RSA 38 point, I mean, colon 22.
There's already a law that says they can do that, whether they put it in there or not. They have the, they have.
I mean, what are they gonna do? Take?
Take the road?
Take, take the road.
Yeah, they'll sue us. And then we have to buy a lawyer and we may or may not win that. And it's like, eh. Only wants to get, get any money out of it to the lawyer.
I don't understand why we can't play nice in the sandbox because we all have an equal part in this. We, it's gonna fix their problem with it coming down on their, eventually on their garage.
But they'll just sue us if it does.
We all have an equal part in this. The win-win for both of us.
Well, when they came in the last time, we seemed to make some grounds on stuff that we came to some agreements. Let's give them back and say, this is what we got. We gotta get going on this. You know?
If we break it, we'll fix it.
Well.
Well, and that's if we break it, we'll fix it. But at their cost, they'll put the price tag on it. And then did I read in here someplace that if we break it, they're gonna fix this and bill us?
Well, they have that option.
Well, I thought I read and it sounded like originally it was, if we break it, we'll fix it.
Yep. That's what we said we would do, but then we crossed it out. I believe we crossed it out because we can't fix a water pipe. It'll never be fixed to their liking.
Or breaking it in. Depends on how, the condition of it too. It should be replaced. I think we should have them come in. We made, the last time they came in, we actually made good progress.
So what broke down between then and now?
Let's give them back and find out. Or here's where at. This is what we have looked at it. We had made, made some of the amendments and we want to get going on this. You guys ready?
Only waste time, that's all. Okay.
We're not too far off.
I feel like it needs to be done.
I'll invite them back in.
Yep.
Please.
All right. Next item, performance evaluation process. So I sent the board the current forms that we were using was a three-part process. Or not process, but three different forms. And then I believe Catherine had Johanna send all of you what the sewer commission uses for a form.
I, I want to say something on this, if I may. I was surprised that on the evaluation, that we were not using a, for the officers and police, their police evaluation. a for the officers and police, their police evaluation. The what we had been doing for years. So I dug it out of the drive. And um I asked why we were not using this and I didn't know why we weren't using it. The last two years, we've not used this.
Correct. I um believe that my recollection is I was directed to do that. It wasn't all police officers. It was just the command staff. So it was I don't I I take that back. I don't even think it goes to command staff. It was the chief. And then with all the change at the top, um there was no one really qualified to evaluate the sergeants. And if you recall, we had them do self evaluations which the board then read and responded to.
Okay.
But if you want to go back to for the chief, does whatever you want.
I asked the chief because I didn't know if it was the prior couple of prior chiefs before him. If it was something that was just his uh doing that this was. So I asked him to to see if it was mandated by the the academy. And it's not mandated by the academy. However, the academy said the evaluation should point to police work. The evaluation should point to the police work, which our evaluation does not. It's general terms. So this should be for officers as well because if anything happened and they Attorney General's office or any academy, whatever, pulled their jacket, they would need to have evaluations that geared towards police work.
And I believe because the the officers' evaluations are done by the sergeants and that I I couldn't tell you, but my understanding was, well, I take that back because we saw the performance reviews from last year that they were done on on police officer forms. My recollection is the only ones that were not done was the chief and the two sergeants because at the time, there was no one there who could do an evaluation of them. So they did self evaluations. So if if that's what this board wants to do, that's that's what we'll do.
I'd like to see us go back to the police and I think that's what the chief would like to see as well because that's was related related back to me that that's what he would like to see in their i- in their forms was this form here. If anybody wants to take a look at it. John John would like to see it. Yeah, we've we've used it over the year, but is there a way that we could incorporate at some point with that, the self evaluation? I mean, that doesn't give us evaluation and I like the self evaluation. So is you know.
Okay.
You remember that?
Mm hmm.
Is there some way that we could incorporate that with given that with that? I mean, is this is it wrong to do one or the other? I mean, we could do that, right?
That's what you want to do.
Then I would suggest that for the police department that we go back to that because it's specific specifically written for police work and it and it deals with the evaluation of that specific type of work. But also incorporate their this self appraisal uh development.
I like I like both. I like the self appraisal thing. You get to know a lot about uh
Yeah.
people and how they view their work and their worth.
What do you think, Ward?
I'm a both.
Do both? The self evaluation in the police?
Yeah.
Okay. And then continue with this form here for uh and we say.
Town employees.
Town employees or non union.
I've never liked this. Um but I'm sure you can't do it comprehensively. You really can't. There's so many variables. But this hits most of the the mark for you.
Uh this this one has kind of served us well the last couple of years. I don't have a problem with it. It's better than the one we used to have.
That's true. That's true.
Yeah. If by all the comments are filled in on it, at least something.
Yeah, that's a biggie.
And um what is go over what the percentage and responses are.
So where where are you at, John?
The back page.
The last page.
So the last page, if you remember. And that's where I said it didn't work, which is why I was coming back to you to ask you how you want to go forward because what we were trying to do was create some kind of I can't think of what the word is. But so if somebody in all their numbers, you calculated all their numbers in it, they fell within a certain range, they would get a certain percentage. So if they got you know, um really high like Tim got very, very high. And he got the top of the range or some some who just were competent who got you know, the kind of mid range or low range some and you have in the past not given people increases at all. What we have done and what we did last year was the department heads do the reviews of their employees and then they come to the board and make the recommendation on what they believe they should get for a percentage increase. And that's what happened last year. And um I I think the thinking is that they know best the performance of the people that they're supervising. Well, in some cases you agreed, some cases you didn't agree. And so for department heads, why do we, you know, why would we do the evaluation if we know and we're telling you what we think and I don't know. So just wanted to find out if you want to change this.
So I I disagree with having that last page. I think that's that's wrong because it giving people a raise by a percentage based on their numbers is lopsided for the people who make less money compared to the people who make the most money and we create a wide wage gap in between. So like I said, while paying the same amount for dozen eggs, but now somebody else has the ability to um they get a three percent raise and they can buy four dozen eggs with it. The other one gets a three percent raise and they can't even buy a dozen.
Well, that yeah, and that's a conversation.
And also the other part of it is is that at sometimes there's at some point, there has to be a maximum. We can't just keep paying people, sky's not the limit. It's we what is the job worth? So that's why I'm against having this as a you know, have the responses there or whatever, but not a percentage. But and and I don't think any of that information as to what type of raise or anything should be shared with the employee until after we've reviewed it. So
It's not.
I know a couple of times before there were, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, there were numbers that were given to employees prior to us approving it.
I don't believe so.
We have a certain budget, two and a half percent, is it?
Three.
Three this year?
Three. But there John is right. The employee signed off on it before we looked at it last year.
We still decide the raises.
But they are, but we couldn't tweak the the assessment. We couldn't do anything to the assessment because the supervisor already signed off with the the department had already signed off with the employee.
You're gonna have to tell me what you're talking about because I don't remember that. And it doesn't, you don't have to say it here, obviously, because we're in public, but I don't recall that at all.
But some employees were reviewed.
No, I understand what you're saying. I just don't I I'd I'd be curious who you're talking about because I don't recall that, but.
So we well, without having to go back and look at stuff, but going forward, we just won't review. It gets reviewed and then us and then.
That's why it's that's and that's why in the front, that first cover sheet, it gives you the process right down here, the process of how it's supposed to be filed. So just to recap, you want to keep this form, you just want that last page gone. Is that correct?
Let's see. It's this. So the department manager supervisor review self self evaluation completes evaluation of the employee. Then the department or supervisor reviews the evaluation with the employee. That's where we got in trouble. Employee acknowledged receipt of evaluation. And then they come to us and recommends the merit increase to the department manager.
That merit increase is not a part of the discussion, Pat.
No, I know that, but a number three, it was signed uh last year, it came to us signed.
So in years prior, because there was an evaluation form, that did happen in years prior and that's why we changed it.
Okay.
Well, I think the bottom line is let's make sure it doesn't happen.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's why this was changed.
So not this process steps is the process we follow now. It's what's so it's reviewed with the manager and the supervisor and they review with the employee before because we've noticed that sometimes there are a lot of things that are missed, good things and bad things.
Mostly comments.
Comments, yeah.
Yeah.
That was the.
So we should we it's other than the last page, which I think everybody agrees through. Well, I didn't hear from John and I mean, Scott and Joe. The last page, everybody is okay with this evaluation and the self evaluation going out to the town employees. We're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um the way I I understand it, what John wants is before the employee acknowledges receipt of evaluation, it should come to the Board of Selectmen and then go back to the department head to give to the employee.
And all that are on there and then go back to the.
Just switch the order.
So we take three and put that after six.
Put four after six?
Three and four.
Yeah.
Three and four?
Uh yeah, I guess it would be three and four.
Yeah, three and four.
And then we're good to go. We can just go ahead and start giving this to the department head and department heads and we could do start doing the evaluations. Send out the self evaluation. Well, everybody's good with the self evaluation? Everybody?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then should we have a deadline to return the self evaluation?
We always do.
Oh, yeah, all right. You got that. Okay. And then uh are we doing a deadline for evaluations to be done?
We always do.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're gonna let us know so when we can have a host.
Yeah, so yeah.
You'll get to it, I know.
Yeah. So I mean, this is the reason I'm asking you the question now because every year
We always fall short.
The deadline. I'm trying to stay ahead of it this year.
Yep.
So.
I'm glad with I'm glad you're doing it like this. So look at it's May and we've already settled on the evaluation process. Okay.
All right, next uh item, the energy saves paperwork needs to be completed for the energy rebate for the new boiler. I wasn't if somebody's doing that, I don't have any documentation paperwork.
I all I did, I'm not and I don't understand why I was being asked when the guy from the heater is coming in to go and schedule it or communicate or anything. Because all I did is I reviewed it and I brought in applications for it. So you know, I I thought administration would take care of that and as well as getting the rebate, right? Okay.
Yeah, that would make sense, but that's that wasn't what was happening and we weren't not aware of what was going on. So I think Pat straightened that all out. We're good there. Uh what I'm asking.
I was asked if I had the phone number to contact the guy who's installing. I said, it's on the bid. It's got to be on the paperwork and said, oh, okay. It's a little bizarre.
What what I what I'm asking for now, if somebody else is not doing that, I'm happy to do it. I just need the the paperwork so that I can file it with the people.
What paperwork?
Well, the the type, you know, what he actually installed, um you know, what was the final thing that he installed? What did he finally do? Because that's.
Did you get an invoice for it?
Well, we paid, no.
Okay.
Not not finished yet.
He's not finished yet?
Well, he has to go, he has to tidy tidy it up. He's you're on, you're on working on the new.
So we we paid a fifty percent deposit on it, but before we can get the rebate, we need to have it paid in full and there needs to be an inspection.
So my understanding is that he was gonna come this week and clean up little things, you know, tie wrap and make it the piping or whatever he needs to do. And then call Kevin and say, anything left here, this is this can all go and take all his tools and the excess piping that he can send back and get the money back. Once he knows what that that's all calculated, then he'll do the invoice, send that to you.
So and when he sends us that invoice, he'll give us the documentation of what he actually installed, correct?
Yeah, it should be done. I I would imagine he these I'll tell.
Should be pretty specific. He's charging us for it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would imagine he's gonna give that should be a whole booklet.
Can you ask him to just communicate directly?
Yeah.
With them?
I'd be glad to.
Both you and I, I think, out on that whole part.
Glad to.
I think that's I don't I have no problem if somebody has to run down with the key and open a door.
Yep.
Or anything, but it should be you know, and and emails or whatever, you know, is appropriate to to do it.
Okay.
Kind of a question sort of direct to with all this. We have someone that's come in and installed the new heating system. This is a new person.
Yep.
So we have to have make sure we have all the correct contact information with this person because if there's any problem two months from now.
It was all.
Six months from now, a year from now. This is the person we call, not the old person.
No, and we we have that because he gave us, yeah.
Okay. Well, like I said, a lot of me is catch up.
So I guess what Catherine is saying that we should change the source source person for the heating system. It should be this person because it's all under warranty. So we make sure that that person is contacted now for heat.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I've only opened the doors for him. I it is a work of art. If anybody wants to take a look downstairs, I've never I've installed. I I've installed telephone systems and and put it up on, you know, boards and things like that. But I got to tell you, I it's never my work is never been as neat as this guy. It's it's a work of art.
So the next item, the community power presentation, just to follow up, uh Tim advised that we are committed to twenty twenty six and suggests we Tim advised that we are committed to 2026 and suggests we wait and see how the experience is for other towns. They did call and wanted to know what the interest of the town, if they wanted to, you know, pursue this. So I told them I would be talking to you tonight and I would get back to them.
It's a big article in the newspaper that got reversed on it. Problem with the public utilities.
I think they need to work their kinks out first.
Yeah, I I I think we go with Tim's recommendation right now. We're tied in till 2026, and that gives us, well, it gives us time to evaluate too, exactly what they're doing with other communities. So and how successful it is.
And then the last item was in your to be signed file.
Yep.
Are we doing this for town hall as well?
This?
The last bullet?
We've done it for 10. I think we recognize, I think it's recognized five, 10, 15. Then the other thing I wanted to mention, because it just happened today. Is this repair of the ceiling above Gail's desk. So we had somebody come in in just recently and indicated that the lead levels in the ceiling tiles are very high. The person who or the company that will do the work got the results back. The gentleman who did the test sent it to the company. They responded back yesterday telling us that it would be $5,000 to do the repairs. And everything would need to be moved out of the office and it would be shut down while they do all that work. And then the company that did the test will need to come back in and do a like a dust sampling, just to make sure that everything's been cleaned. So that's where we're at with that, and just wanted to see how you want to proceed.
We have to fix it.
Yeah.
I know that there's planning involved around that, so.
Everybody?
Yes.
Go forward.
Yeah.
Go forward, Jeanie.
All right, that's all I have.
Right. Go ahead.
Can I make one more point? If you know, before they put the ceiling in, put everything back, if that room, if you want painted or something like that, that would be you know, a good time for to brighten up the room while there's nothing in there, because I don't think her room's been painted.
No, it actually got painted probably, I think, the first year I I came on board, my office and her office got painted by the Department of Corrections folks came in and did that.
But if, you know, if after you take everything out, we'll get, see, yeah.
That it? Okay. Do we want to talk about the transportation? Do we want to have me write a letter of support on the transportation from what Cap had talked about?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Concerned about things just all sudden end up being our bill after that.
Right.
Hope it works out and I can get some money out of it.
I think it's an awful lot of money to pay to transport 16 people.
It might not be 16 people, though.
It might be 28.
A micro part.
I mean, and it was interesting, Joey, you asked specifically what's the benefit to Tilton, and I didn't hear the answer. Uh, no, there was no answer. Right, that's what I thought. Before I, my question, my, it was more of a statement until I saw what the, how it was going to specifically benefit Tilton. I can't even begin to quantify what it's worth to the taxpayers at all. And I think she understood that that was my point.
Well, one of the, one of the things about having public transportation is, so you have companies that need workers. So you can either take your company and move to where there's more workers or take the workers and move them to and from the company. So I I think this one year of experimental and see how that helps with all the businesses, whether
That's what she said, yeah.
J Jill or the outlets.
And when the time comes for funding these companies that are making use, because it is a workforce program, she stated that pretty specifically, wasn't for your, although could be used by people getting to the doctor's appointments or going shopping or whatever. They were also stopping at places like J Jill and Watts down in Franklin, and I'm sure there's more on their list when they get a final plan in place. But if, but they're not going up to the Laconia Industrial Park. Not at this point, they aren't. No. So if somebody in Tilton worked at Laconia, look, even their maps at City Hall, their list said the hospital, that's that's as far as it goes. So if they worked at the industrial park, they'd have a long walk.
But it doesn't really mean 16 people or 28 people. It means you get the workforce.
But that's all the buses.
No.
On one trip, yeah.
On one trip.
But it's only one trip.
No, it's continuous loop all day. 6:30 AM till nine, 9 PM.
No, 6:30.
6 PM, I'm sorry. 6 AM to, it makes a continuous loop all day until 6 PM. So it's 16 people in the morning that they pick up.
But I misunderstood.
Then nine o'clock, you may get another group of people that want to go shopping. And then, you know, at one o'clock, those people might get out of work.
I misunderstood, because when I heard the question asked, the answer didn't
Yeah, it's a
indicate that.
Yeah.
Right.
When you asked about, you missed the bus and you're out of luck.
Right.
You are.
If you said yes.
Let you wait two hours for
See, that wasn't sad. You missed the bus, you missed the bus, and it was, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
But in some, in some businesses may start at 6:30 and you get to, you know, Franklin by seven. And then other businesses might not open until eight, so they get the second round busing, you know. So in all in all, there may be 50 or 60 people in Tilton that take advantage of it.
If you ran a bus through there every 20 minutes, then it would be much more, you know, in demand service. I lived in Portland, Oregon for 10 years. They got a great bus system. Bus comes by every 10 minutes, 16 hours a day. No matter where you are in the city. I went downtown and then you could make connection and they put in a rail thing through the northeast corridor. Very impressive, very impressive. And they can't do that here. It pays for itself there. Well, they charge a fare. There's a whole thing about the fares and whatever. But when the time comes, I'm I'm going to be adamant that these companies become a part of the program for the money. Because I can quantitatively point to how it benefits them. But not necessarily the town of Tilton. So and there's a bigger picture, and I'm sure we'll talk about it again. I'm a little more supportive hearing that that this is an all day thing, because I was thinking, okay, if if I jump in a car and I need to go to Laconia Hospital, live in Tilton, now I'm not going to get anything done in an hour. We all know that. I'm going to be there for a couple of hours. So if there's a bus
Bus coming back, right.
Then that person can go have whatever they need done and then get back.
Yeah.
It's Laconia to Concord and back, and they only and which is what, 40 minutes, 50 minutes, maybe?
That route.
An hour.
I'd say with stops, every two hours.
Yeah.
I think you're looking, I think you're looking at probably six trips a day.
Yep.
Round trips, round trips there and back. So I mean
To make all little stops.
Right.
Yeah.
And during the summer and
And during the summer, you're right.
And I think, I think, I I think with with what Joe's saying is I I I would want to see the analytics. And my guess is that they're going to have, and they're going to produce the numbers of ridership and all of that stuff.
Right.
Because they're not going to, they're not going to show up at a budget committee meeting for any of these municipalities without those kind of numbers so that they can see it. So.
I don't know about the other one, but Terry Page has been working at this for years and years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I mean, you know, that's, I mean, just seeing those numbers, I think, will be
So right now, they're looking for a letter of support.
Right.
I'd support it. I think we should give them the opportunity. They're fully funded.
For one year.
Give them the opportunity to see what they can do.
I I think, I think, you know, taking the 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 taking, I'm going to use the term, taking a shot at having some kind of public transportation, which we don't have right now. It's better to see what it's like for a year and then then go from there in terms of how much is it benefiting our community.
I liken it to our Tilton senior bus and our MOU to Northfield and Sammerton. They took a chance with us at $10 per person, and I had no data whatsoever. I went out and got the businesses to chip in in a into a bucket. And we've been using that. Now we have the data and the next, this coming budget season, they're thrilled to put it in their budget because it works. So, yeah, now that we have it and it works, they're thrilled to be on board. So let's give them a chance.
Yeah.
See what they can do.
Yep. Is there any more new business to come before us? Any questions? I sent that green envelope down to you. It's an equalization. I know you like to read that. Go ahead, Joe.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.